So I'd like to bring the Concord-Carly Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please know we're on Zoom and being recorded.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee meeting to order with the same note. While I and you were talking earlier, and just to kick this off in the name of the fact that we're having so many meetings and trying to be efficient with them, we wanted to just kind of start highlighting quickly at the beginning what we're trying to accomplish here tonight, so that we can try to get through it efficiently. Tonight, it's a relatively light agenda. We do have a couple of things to bring up in the Chairs Reports that are important and things to at least think about, but then under Reports for Discussion, as might have been noted if people have looked at an earlier agenda, the 9th grade academy update is going to be postponed until next week since Mr. Mistrullo is doing important prep for a Zoom meeting tonight, a welcome meeting. So we just have our COVID-19 Task Force update and our budget update, and then we'll go into executive session. So that's what we're doing tonight. We thought we'd kick off. First, are there any public comments? Oh, and to review, if you haven't been a part of one of these before, if you'd like to make a comment, you can, as a participant, raise your hand, push the Raise Your Hand button, and we will see that there is a hand raised.
If you're on your phone, you can dial *9.
Oh, thank you. On your phone, *9. We learn something new about Zoom every day. Seeing none, we'll keep going. If we've missed anybody, you can jump in, and we'll try to catch you later. Correspondence, we just had two emails to both full committees. One was just a marketing one. The other one was about, basically, equity and some of the questions that we've all been talking about recently and giving us some great questions to think about. That was it on correspondence, so we'll go right into Chairs and Liaison Reports. As I mentioned, a couple of things here. One that I will point out, we've all been forwarded an email from the MAS-C, the Mass Association of School Committees, asking us to consider signing on to a resolution which would, in effect, ask the state to fund any COVID-19-related mandates. So asking them, basically, not to give us unfunded mandates that we have to then deal with. I forwarded it. Would it be helpful if I read it, or do you all want to just take a look at it, and we can discuss it for their next time?
I think it might be better. Unless people have specific comments about it, we wouldn't change it, given that it's coming from multiple committees.
Right, exactly.
So if you want to take a look at it, and we will put it on the agenda for next week and move it, talk about it, and vote it up or down. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, and for people listening in, it was a very simple, very simple statement that said, an appeal to the legislature for full funding for COVID-related educational changes.
Yep, that's basically all it says.
And if anybody wants to see it, they could email the school committee, and we'll send it to them. It'll be on the agenda later this week.
Correct, yep.
Okay, perfect. And the second under Chairs Reports was, again, back to equity, something that we all wanted to think about. And Court, I think you drafted something for us to consider.
Yeah, I did. I'll preface it with the note that I did attend the session about talking about race and racial injustice with our kids that was hosted by Lori and Kristen and Andrew yesterday. And it was, I thought, exceptional work. So thank you for bringing in your experts. Dr. Martin was somebody that I think we should all pay attention to. So you've got a great resource there, and we need her. You called it out pretty specifically last week, Lori. You put it in print. You said racism is in our schools. You're making it discussable in a new way, so thank you for that. And you also said that this, in another communication, you referred to this national event, this national horror that we're experiencing with the death of George Floyd, as being a beginning. And it is. It is a beginning for many of us, but it's also a continuation of decades and decades and decades of work. So it's both. It's more of the same, but it's also a beginning, and thankfully, it's a beginning. The fact is, maybe this school committee doesn't have to make a formal statement. Anybody who knows the people on this committee, I think, knows that we say what we believe, that we do have a deep respect for human differences and the dignity of all. But my concern is that in the absence of a formal statement, maybe there's one or two or 10 people out there that might misinterpret and might say that we're not being proactive enough. And we are attempting to be proactive, notwithstanding the fact that, yeah, we all know we are reacting also. We're reacting to a video that nobody can put away ever again. You know, it's out there, and it's out there as a message for us. So I tried to be faithful to open-meeting law and simply asked committee members to share some ideas with me based on some thoughts that I shared independently with each member, so that we weren't doing any debate or discussion other than what we're doing here in public. I think statements by committees are tough. Statements by committees on Zoom are probably tougher still, but our effort is, I think, a necessary one. So I can do a screen share, Heather, if you want, or I can simply read it. What's easier? I can do both.
Um.
I'm happy to just read it.
Right, you read it. I think it would be good.
So this is a draft, a statement to the community. "The killing of George Perry Floyd Jr. is the most recent in a long line of crimes and injustices that are made possible by persistent bias and discrimination that is embedded in American culture. Mr. Floyd's death has elicited a widespread call to action and put new energy and commitment toward achieving our goal of racial equality and an end to hate. Systemic racism and institutionalized prejudice have taken root in our culture and our schools over the past 400 years. Enough is enough," is the appeal that these school committees, this school committee and school leaders hear as a new call to action. It is our call to action. "Does hope for a better future die today at the knee of systemic racism? We reject that. Does love for others die as we witness..." In horror, eight minutes of cruelty, we reject that. "Does our personal dignity die when we discover that our hands casually remain in our pockets while we witness injustice? We reject that. Furthermore, we promise that you will not find our hands in our pockets. We have work to do in the Concord and Concord-Carly schools, and we are committed to that work." Cultural awareness is one part. We need to provide our children with positive growth opportunities and firsthand experiences that teach responsibility for the safety and dignity of others. We expect the schools to develop more cross-community programs that leverage Concord and Carlyle's privileged position and benefit communities beyond our own. Toward this end, we ask the support of the entire community. We commit to listening and learning and acting for change so that the children and families we support are empowered to love, learn, and transform American society and realize the dream of equality for all. We understand that the killing of George Floyd, killings, plural, of George Floyd and countless other men, women, and children of color over the course of our nation's history is made possible because people have accepted it. White people have learned this acceptance. Implicit bias is real and powerful and among us. We have learned that it is, quote, excuse me, learned that it is easier to, quote, "go along to get along," unquote. But we've been grievously wrong all along. The truth is that it's time to change. We will do the necessary work of listening and learning and acting for change so that the children and families of Concord, Carlyle, and Boston that we support are empowered to love, learn, and transform American society and realize the dream of equality for all. Racism has no place here. We rededicate ourselves to the cause of racial justice and respect for all human beings."
Thank you, Court. Hard read.
And also hard work to put that together. Court, thank you so much for taking the time and also for taking the thoughts from each of us and aggregating what we added to your own.
I think it...
That's a very powerful statement that you've put together for us.
It's heartbreaking that we're doing this, that we have to do it.
Sure is. Do we, we've all had this in its original draft form. Now have this current...
We have this one now, as of a few minutes ago as well, representing contributions independently from school committee members.
So I think I would say timing is of the essence, and it might be, if people are okay to support this, that we suppose we could, we should vote to post it. So to do that, we'd be, does anybody have a problem with that versus waiting for next week?
Beautifully set, Court. Thank you.
So could I have a motion for both committees to accept the letter?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter that Mr. Booth just read, and I'd also like to, the motion is to post it, is that correct?
Yes, I think what we would do is...
Or accept the statement as a statement from the whole committee? Is that, is that better?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Booth's statement that he just wrote as a statement from both Concord and Concord-Carly School Committees.
Have a second.
We have a second for that.
Yes.
A second for Concord.
Good job. We need a second for the region, right?
Then I'll second for the region.
Second for the region.
Okay.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion?
Only that I hope this encourages us and gives us the fortitude for many discussions that have meaning. Mr. Modell is not with us yet tonight, but he expressed his support, provided his thinking, but also was quick to say, in his estimation, actions really matter, which is not to say our words aren't important, but we'll be judged by our actions.
I agree. This is not a statement that stands alone without action behind it. It previews action.
I'll note that we all, I think we all stated something last week during our meeting about this incident and where things are in America today, across the globe, actually. I do want to point out that, you know, we have, over the last two or three years, been working hard at cultural competency, and I think we've done great work throughout the But certainly, what has happened with Mr. Floyd's death and the outcry that that's created, if we're fortunate, has turned the tide, and we, as a society, will take a different approach to the way we've been dealing with racism. And I think this statement points out that we here, where we have the most effect, will do the same. Thank you, Court.
Agreed. Thank you.
Can we move on?
You need a...
Well, there's no further discussion. Let's take the vote by roll call.
By roll, yeah. So Rainey.
Rainey, aye for both.
Booth.
Aye for both.
Out.
Aye for both.
Mustafi.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Johnston, aye for both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a committee report or liaison reports? So on to the superintendent's report.
So while I just jumped in quickly, the Concord-Fin comment last week, and I think we're going to talk about it during the FY21 Finance update, but there was, there was a discussion about capital articles, and they didn't, I don't think they really mentioned our capital articles per se, but I could have missed it. I wasn't listening 100%. The other thing, there was an interesting conversation about the middle school project, and perhaps in a future meeting, we could maybe review in a little more detail where that project is, but it was a good conversation. So other committee members might want to watch it if they have leisure time.
Got it. Thank you. And yes, sure, we can do more of an update on the middle school project at some point soon. As a reminder, right now, it's, the committee is kind of wrapping up some feasibility work and taking a pause, so there isn't a lot to update right now.
Through the chairs, I could speak briefly in regard to the Policy Subcommittee.
Great.
Just to give people an update, that two weeks before we moved suddenly to our online world, the Policy Subcommittee met, and to quickly review, we spent most of our time, this was Mr. Erlich, Dr. Hunter, Mr. Modell, Dorothy Presser out of MAS-C as an advisor, and myself. And we spent most of our time on two policies that we believe need attention and need inclusion in our policies. One, civil rights and hate speech, and I'll speak to that first. If people look at our policies, which are important, they do guide what happens in our schools, we might find some overlap with nondiscrimination policies, harassment policies, several, gang activity policies, bullying prevention policies, student complaint policies, student conduct policies. Our administration has a lot of tools. The discussion was around whether this was a necessary additional tool, a policy specifically around civil rights and hate speech. The initial opinion from our technical advisor was, we've got, we've got this covered. But to give credit where credit is due, Yuval Erlich, before he resigned from the committee, pressed hard, and after considerable discussion, it was agreed that Dr. Hunter and Ms. Presser would work on drafting a policy to be brought back to the Policy Subcommittee. So I want members to know that this work is in progress, albeit slightly interrupted. What do, what do these policies do? They put additional, what, tools at the disposal of school leaders to manage and correct and try to re-steer, if you will, what would otherwise, what otherwise happen absent a strong policy, like a hate speech policy. The other one that we're working on was around gender identity, and that too is a discussion in progress, and that will be brought to you for some updates, because that one does exist at a future meeting. So with that, what I'd like to do is suggest to you that before school reconvenes, notwithstanding our online world, that the Policy Subcommittee reconvene. But I have to note, and this is where the chairs need to attend to membership on these subcommittees, we have now two members, Mr. Modell and me, and we're absent Mr. Erlich. So that's status of policy. Lori, do you want to add anything? I don't know if I properly introduced this to you prior as an agenda item. Lori there? So I'm going to guess that I characterized her role in this accurately. She and Ms. Presser are working on it.
Yeah, no, you did, Court, absolutely. And we should get back to that. We abandoned it for good reasons, but it's really important that we don't leave it there.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Court. And so if there are not, unless there are any other liaison reports, then we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Good, thank you. I'm actually going to kind of take that same topic and just talk a little bit on the work we've been doing this past week. Much of my time has been focused on both planning for the sessions that Court referenced and was well-attended last night, and there's a second one tomorrow night for secondary parents. The panel will be the same, myself, Kristen Herbert, Andrew Nemeche, and then, as Court mentioned, Dr. Paula Martin, who's been one of our consultants for years on cultural work, and Jeanne Thompson-Grove, who's also been a frequent consultant to us in the partnership that they bring and the resources. And we did record that last night, where it's up on the webpage, and we'll be sending that out. We posted the presentation, and we'll do the same for tomorrow night and be sure. Last Friday, we met with Andrew and I and the high school administrators, all met with the Metco families from the high school, parents and kids, and it was, to what Court referenced, you know, maybe it's not a beginning, but something's different this week. And, you know, I don't think I'm just creating that. I think I'm reacting to it, too. We were able to open up a really frank, honest conversation with them in a way that I don't think we'd had before, and we had to hear some really hard things about being a Metco student at CCHS, and obviously, this is inclusive of any Concord and Carlyle resident families as well, of not feeling included, and more blatant racism than that as well. So it was a really important conversation. Andrew and I haven't been able to articulate it all that well yet as we're processing, and I know Mike Mistrullo and his team as well. There was just so much to take in, and they came ready to share their stories, but also with a lot of suggestions, you know, and I think that was equally powerful and moving. I've been on calls with other superintendents, and Court's emotion is not unique. We had a pretty tearful session among superintendents last week. A number of Metco superintendents went into Boston and were able to stand next to Millie and make statements to the press about the, on behalf of all the Metco superintendents and our commitment. And I just can feel something's different. The energy, hard energy, not necessarily positive, but some committed energy for something to change, is different this week, and I'm getting that both in the forums and in the conversations and by email. And I think there's been an ability to start to talk differently. I think it's turning from cultural competency to true anti-racism, and I think that's a pretty huge turning point, and one we're going to have to work at and sustain. It can be a flash in the pan if we don't keep attending to it, but I'm hopeful and I'm encouraged, and that's actually been really empowering in such a hard time to feel like something can be better. And, you know, I've said in a couple of forums, you know, maybe we can't change everything, but I do think we can impact the world our kids are in, in our schools, with some long, slow, hard work and everyone's engagement. So we're grateful for the response we've had so far and look forward to more to come. Hopefully, more people will join us tomorrow. On a totally different note and tone, just updates on where we are with opening up the school campuses to the community. Jared and I are working on the guidance coming out about COVID management as Phase 2 starts to take hold, just is coming regularly and often, and we're trying to keep up with it. So we are starting to engage with community groups and usage of the fields. It's an eight-page protocol document, half of which is about the organizer of the activity and half of which is the facility operator's responsibility, so that's us. So Jared and I met today. Aaron Jankus is going to be a lead on this, as well as Ian Rames, Jared's assistant business manager. We're making our way through, and it'll, it'll get there. I know the community's anxious for some opportunity, but we need to do it right and carefully. So we're going to take the time to get the process in place and liaison with the groups and then start to make access available. But it may, might take us a little bit. The advisories just came out Thursday, I think, and there's a lot to sort through and make sure we're in accordance with the recommendations and requirements for safety, and that's got to be first. So that, plus the budget and the other things we're going to talk on tonight with the task force, so, and a lot of end-of-year things that are just really great. That's why Mike Mistrullo's not here tonight. He has a senior awards night that I'm hoping he'll wind up so I can go to at 7:00, and middle school awards night. We have four more car parades next week at the high school, all three elementary schools in the 8th grade, virtual ceremonies and opportunities. So we are definitely in the end of this school year, trying to keep all our traditions afloat and support kids and families as we celebrate such an odd, crazy year that, you know, it's fun to see some positives to work around, so. So busy time, busy time.
Are we going to have further discussion about the fields later on in the meeting? Is that, or no?
Well, I actually would like to spend more time with Jared and his, Aaron and Ian. We need, we're not quite ready to talk it through. I'd like to bring you some of our process and protocols. We're looking at putting some forms together reflective. I'd like to get a little further along before we start to talk on it.
I didn't have, I just, in terms of jurisdiction, my understanding is it's really the Concord rec that controls most of our fields in terms of usage after school and in the summer. Is that not correct?
It's not completely Concord rec. They book the Doug White field and the town spaces. We do all of the other spaces that are regional.
No, I'm not talking about like at the elementary schools, saying...
Oh, yeah. Our primary foot, because of that, Cynthia, you're absolutely right. Because of that, our focus right now is on the high school and the regional campus.
So everything outside of the Doug White field at the high school?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Good clarification. Thank you. Okay.
Let me just jump in quickly before we go to the next thing. And not to keep returning to it, but in terms of the racial and equity pieces, like you said, it's an emotional thing, and I get very emotional talking about it, and your leadership in this is really deeply appreciated because it's so encouraging to hear how you take it so seriously as well, and that we really are all in this together to make some change, and that it's, we've done, as Lori said, we've been focused on cultural proficiency for a while, and we'll redouble it. cultural proficiency for a while and will redouble those efforts, but this is, this is bigger and it's a new direction. And just, I really appreciate your leadership in helping to take us in that direction.
Thank you.
Then we can move on, I think, to reports for discussion. And as mentioned, we're not doing the ninth-grade academy update tonight because Mike Mistrillo is about to do some awards, so we can go right into the COVID-19 task force update.
Good, thank you. So last Wednesday, all of the working groups and building-based groups met very successfully. I have to say I'm really excited by a few things that came out of those. One is the energy. Two is just continuing to see the depth of expertise in this community and the willingness to volunteer that expertise. I, it, both I know in the group I was part of, but in talking with the others, other folks who were in the other groups, I, you know, we just couldn't have asked for a more robust group of experts to join us. So we feel very fortunate about that, as well as huge engagement by the parent community and the teachers. We're still plugging more kids in, into more groups, so that's been exciting. And really, as I got ready for tomorrow's big task force meeting where we'll share out what each of those groups spoke on and the discussions that happened, each of them worked on some portion of creating the vision. There was at least discussion of the SWAT or homework of the SWAT and then just had, you know, topics of their own areas that they're responsible for. So whether it was health and safety or whole child or operations or blended learning or one of the building-based committees, it started to translate a bit in those conversations to how that's going to come together. So what we're doing tomorrow on the large task force meeting, which is open to everyone, that information's already gone out. We're going to update and look at the vision, which really started to come together. One of the working groups, we had a bulleted list when we left the last big district task force, and every group then had their own discussion and own recording session. And one of the groups, I don't even know which one, started to put it more into a narrative rather than bullets, and it just started to come together. So last night, I was able to compile the bullets from all the different groups and just continue to add to the narrative. And so we've got a really interesting draft to look at tomorrow that really captures the perspective of every group that's involved and the vision we'd have over the next year for them. And I thought it was just really thoughtful. So I'm curious to hear the feedback from the large group tomorrow because things did start to really sync up and there were themes there, and yet every group was represented. So I'm curious, looking forward to that conversation. Each group tomorrow will report out and we've asked members of each of the working groups and building-based task forces to take on that responsibility and share highlights of the meetings of last week. And then we'll spend some time in a working session tomorrow in breakout groups through Zoom to start to study the guidance that's come out in addition to the fields and all of that. We're getting guidance regularly from DESI. On June 1st, we got early childhood and care guidance, which is driving the daycares and the camp processes. We also got guidance as to PPE purchasing on the 5th. Things I did not include in the agenda for the task force because we're still studying it and I'm waiting for my call with the commissioner for more feedback. We did get guidance should districts, because the camps and daycares opened, DESI started to move from saying all remote special ed to you could possibly do special ed in person. We're still studying that and the depth of protocol and practices we'd have to put in place. There were one point that I had concern about that's still being debated up in the commissioner's office and with us as superintendents waiting for clarification. And I, it capped groups at 10, and I wasn't ready to have the task force study that until we got more clarity on whether that's going to roll into the school year or if that was truly a summer indicative. If that rolls into the school year, there's a lot of concern on the implications of that because group size being 10 means you can't just split a class in half the way we might have all been envisioning and some of those other things. So we're waiting for clarification on that. So I didn't include that in there, but it very much, those documents reflect very much what I did include. So I, we're going to do some time together in smaller groups, going through those documents and then sharing out reflections and thoughts from each perspective of whomever you are as a representative stakeholder on the committee. And then we're lined up to be every other week so that one bounces forth and off of the other. We still expect guidance from DESI that we believe will be very directive next week that I hope will then become a big portion of the discussion and feedback for the committees to be looking at and starting to strategize implementation and finding things that are going to work and finding things that are going to be a challenge and starting to get those named. So I'm excited for tomorrow. I actually have gotten pretty energized with this process, maybe because I don't feel so lonely. Feel like I got an army around me now to try to accomplish this. And I think we're off to a good start. So every, every week, one of those groups will meet and we're plugging away toward the later part of July, still trying to have a plan put to paper. And along the way, we're working with the unions on staff surveys. The administrators are working on student surveys at the middle and high school, and we, as a task force, will be working, task force and school committee, working on a parent survey over the next couple of weeks. So, and then we'll go from there. So I think we're off to a good start. More to, more to report out after we get through tomorrow's shares out, sharing out and such.
Great. Thank you. Lori, one, one, one question. And I don't want to alarm you or anybody else, although it may. We, we, the community can wait for a lot of the details on September rollout, but one we can't, and that is, what are the odds that there'll be a look at the school calendar?
Yeah, no, that doesn't alarm me. That's very much on my mind. I, and this is something the committee will have to think through. I don't expect, the commissioner's been very clear that he believes that the start date of school is a local decision because it's bargained and part of our contracts. So we have not heard that there would be a statewide effort to bring anybody back earlier and such. But that doesn't mean, depending on if, whatever they say to us about the proposed split sessions and things like that, I feel like we would want to go back once we know what direction we're going there. For example, on conference dates and early release dates and some of those things that in a normal year, we wouldn't give a second thought to. It seems like at some point, the calendar should come back in front of the committee just to be sure it still is the most sound plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, very good question, very good question.
And Lori, as you know, the, the 10 plus two adults number was, has been widely reported in the press, so I hope it's maybe a little bit wrong, like you're hoping, or low.
Yeah, so we actually got an email this afternoon from Tom Scott, who's the Superintendent's Association Director. Everyone's aware that what got put out is guidance for possible summer services if districts felt comfortable and ready to do that, got grabbed by the media as the document to guide the fall. That is not what came out this week, so he's making sure we know that and saying that there will be more to talk on, on as we get the official guidance about the fall next week. And yes, we're all, of all things that's in there so far that's been put out, that's the one that, you know, if 10 is the cap with two adults, you can't just split kids up the way we might have been envisioning and pretty quickly you're into how many kids can come to school at a time? Is it half or is it third? That kind of question, which is huge. And you're getting, and you're into staffing issues and things that people can't afford at this point. So thank you, Cynthia, for that because the media did grab it extensively this, today especially, and, you know, put it out as if it was the plan when it's not. It's the, it's the guidance for how you might do summer school over the months of July or into August if you feel ready to try that. So, you know, communication and all of that. We'll try to be sure we share out everything we know as we know it. And if questions come up because the press is anxious for things, we're happy to clarify at any point, so. Anything else?
Thank you for all that. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question regarding the summer for the special education. I saw the DESI recommendation that if possible to bring the special education students in person in July for some remediation work. Is that something that we will be looking at with this ever-changing situation and recommendations?
Yeah, Ruth and I have had a lot of conversations about it. The guidance, there's lots of conditional language all through that. If you feel ready and you feel it's safe. Being so soon after we've seen any of the direction this is going, whether it be the daycares or the camps or now special education services in the summer, there's an awful lot to figure out there. And because our summer services, we have upwards of 100 students who qualify, that's a very big undertaking for us and we aren't sure we could be ready in that amount of time. So we've, we've been really leaning towards remote, which is what most of the districts are saying, are sticking with because we're prepared and can do better job of being prepared for that. We understand there's challenges with the remote learning for some students, but we, we need to be sure we're ready and the protocols and training and the staffing and all of those pieces that if we'd had the months of April and May to work with, might have put us in a different position. So there's been, it's been quite a discussion at my level, Evan, to answer your question, among superintendents and special education directors. And I was on a call this afternoon with the DESI Associate Commissioner and again, on Friday with the commissioner. And really, they put it out in case the district feels ready to do it. I know Carlisle's looking to do it. The program there is smaller and a little easier to, to manage, I think. We are, we are not feeling like we're going to be ready to do that this summer and are not looking to do it wrong. So that's our take tonight. It's pretty fresh off the press, so we're going to keep talking about it. But I, I'm awfully anxious to jump in with feet first and not have thought through and made sure we had it all accurate. And we haven't spoken to any teachers or anyone yet to see, even if we have people interested to do it. We're all lined up for remote though, so we're going to probably stay the course.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's, we've given the states some feedback about the challenges of all this last-minute guidance they're giving and the questions it breeds. We totally understand why.
Should we move on to budget update?
I think so, yeah. So two things related to the budget tonight. We got a request from the Concord Town Manager through the, from the select board through the Town Manager to look at our, review the warrant articles and give consideration to only essential items. So Jared and I have been talking and that's, that's fairly simple for us. We need to remind them that the parking article is not being moved because that still shows on the warrant list, so we can remind them of that. Obviously, the budget articles are essential for both districts. So that really only left up for discussion of any kind was our capital article, which is part of the Town Manager's budgets. But we thought it made sense, given the request and given how much things have changed, to review that with you and see if you wanted to modify the request. Jared can give you an update on where we are with the projects that are in there. There is room for discussion on what we propose and put forward, and even if we're going to seek to spend the whole $900,000. So Jared, do you mind just a minute, for a minute, looking at the, the plan?
Yep. So next year, our biggest cost obviously is the ERUs that we're going to be at the Alcott and Thoreau. Those at this time have been postponed. We would need, there would have to be a good 10 weeks of lead time, once we awarded the project to somebody for them to get everything in. So we would have had a start earlier. So this is something that we could maybe do during one of the vacation weeks. You're probably looking at next spring. So that's, you know, 80%-ish of, 75% of our ask, as well as there's $100,000 in there for the middle school, just life and safety, as well as some other items, smaller items that could probably, the boiler exhaustor height is the, in the AC chiller at the Willard. So, so nothing at this point is, we're acting on them at this point. We're waiting for funding.
So one question, you mentioned the middle schools. I think Wally might have brought this up too, but given that the middle school project is on hold, we don't know for how long. We hope it's not a long extended period of time, but we don't know. Do we need to be thinking about any more money that could need to be put into the middle schools if they need to last a year or two longer than we initially thought? You know, hopefully, again, hopefully it's not that long, but, but we don't know yet.
You want me to answer? Do you want to answer?
Yeah, yeah, and I apologize. For some reason, my computer is going to die.
Okay, I'll answer while you get on track.
All right.
No problem. So, you know, I, in thinking on it, you know, we have, we still have chronic things and so far they're little, right? So we had a issue there last week with a pipe leaking or whatever. And so far, the $100,000's been perfectly adequate to manage those. In reviewing the state of the union over there with the infrastructure, I don't think, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't think you've seen any major change. If we were going to be delayed 10 years on the middle school, then things are totally different, even five. 12 months to 18 months, I think you're in the same ballpark of having some risk, always having some risk, but not having anything become a higher priority at a, at a high yield cost level. That would be my impression. So I think with the $100,000, we haven't had any issues with staying within that in the last few years, so there's no sign that that would change at this point.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable, I guess that's a long way to say, I'm comfortable with the 100.
And sorry about that. I did hear all that. I agree with that. Again, if we had a crystal ball and we knew it was going to go wrong, then I'd say we need X. But it's just, it's reactionary money. It's contingency. So, yeah.
So reactionary meaning, in the best sense of the word, it's contingency for needed life safety repairs. And if you don't find them, you're not going to look for them.
Correct.
We find them on our, we do check those buildings on the weekends and every day since school closed, and we do generally find them. So there's, especially water, we keep finding little water, you know, pipe problems and things like that. So I guess to your point, we try to be sure nothing's going, going bad without us being aware of it that's going to turn into a major problem. So I think it is reactive, but it, there's a little proactive attempt to not let it be so reactive or into a major, major cost, major issue.
Yeah, and we were fortunate during some winter events that things that could have gone very wrong didn't.
Sure.
You know.
The building checks every day has been a big help. We haven't come in on a Monday really and seen something. We've always, you know, either caught it on the Saturday or the Sunday or the night of. So we would continue that for as long as the building, I'm sure, is open.
And you've got your building shutdown, safety protocols in there to keep things healthy so you can turn things back on without any
Yeah.
additional risks.
Yes.
Okay. Can you come back to the energy recovery units? Thoreau and Alcott are the priorities. What is the, for lack of a better word, what's the degree of urgency or the degree of risk were they to be or one were to be put off? Or are there intermediate Band-Aids that in a time of potential austerity, we should talk about?
Right. So I did talk to Russ about that. He thinks putting them off one year won't be a huge, huge deal. We would do some preventative maintenance on them, just checking
We would do some preventative maintenance on them, just checking them out, making sure that they're working. They're just not efficient right now. So our, our utility bills that I was hoping would go down a little bit because of this, not huge money, but those, we won't see savings there. So I, I think this is something that could potentially be put off, but not for very long.
So would a, would a possibly responsible move on our part be to, and I'm just thinking out loud here, I know that's dangerous, tell the Town Manager that we're, we could discuss delaying one, but not both so they are staggered and so we don't pile on the requirements for fiscal '22? Is that, is that a way forward that would be the wisest?
So the order of priority, at least how Russ sees it, would be the Alcott. So we had planned to start there any, planned to start there first. And it was a two-year project for both, as you can see that we have that. So maybe stretching it out over three years. It will have to be done, but Alcott right now is the priority. So if we, if, if we could, you know, push off Thoreau for a year and I'll find out how much of this portion would be Alcott. I am afraid to say that I think the $690 would just cover the Alcott.
Right.
Would be the second year. But I can, I can talk to Russ and come back with an answer on that.
All right. Important information and unfortunate. Okay, all right.
And Jared, do you, do you think you could in any way determine what the cost savings might be?
They did give me that. And I believe it was between 20 and 25,000 per school. So it's savings.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially over time.
A little greener?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot greener.
So, so yeah, if you could find that out, because I don't think, I think they're really trying to determine if we can, the Finance Committee, not do capital spending that's perhaps not absolutely required in maintenance or something like this. And this is more in the, we need to do it. And I don't think there's going to be more money in the pot next year or the year after. So I think this is something that we should go forward with, so.
And I think, one comment I would make is that while I was at the Finance Committee to talk about the building committee, I didn't stay on the meeting to hear this discussion. And I wasn't part of the Select Board discussion directly either to really understand the intent of the conversation. So I think we're having a first discussion. I don't, I actually would recommend we don't make decisions tonight until we've connected with them more directly, either Chair to Chair or me to Stephen or whatever, and just better understand what their question is about essential, the definition of essential and what the goal is. Are we trying to really just reduce costs no matter what? Or are we just trying to prioritize at a different threat? What threshold are we looking for?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate Chair to Chair and Superintendent to Town Manager in the short term.
Yep, absolutely. I'm happy to, I'm happy to get involved with that discussion with the Chair. And to that point, to your point Lori, what I was just going to jump in with, and I think this makes sense, is that it feels like we're at a point where we don't have a decision of what's necessary and what's not because we don't know that threshold. But it might be valuable to be able to communicate that, you know, there are things that in theory, depending on the threshold, we could conceivably put it off, but we don't necessarily consider it the most fiscally responsible thing to do. So if it's possible to support these, it is actually more fiscally prudent if you look at the town's, you know, five-year overlook, outlook versus the one-year outlook, then it makes more sense to do it. And so that would hopefully give some perspective to them in giving us a little more perspective on threshold. You know, it's a chicken and egg a little bit, but I think that is important context for them to hear also.
Yep. Good. So we had one other second topic on the budget tonight. We were going to turn you to the regional budget and talk on FY '20. Prepay, Jared, is that the plan?
Yep. So right now at the, at the high school, as I always said, it's, it's still fluid, but my numbers for the most part are holding. So I would like to prepay some items such as tuitions, as well as, we had about $386,000 in the FY '21 budget for IT. If we could get ahead of that for the laptop replacement. So that's, I have a quote for that. That's something that we could prepay. So I, I just want to know what the protocol, I guess, would be for prepaying items before June 30th.
I'm sorry, Jared, the, it's, we're just discussing one item right now, the laptop replacement prepay?
And then the tuitions, which is something that we always usually pay three months in advance for really the summer tuitions. We pay usually out of the prior year. And that's money that I think I will have available that would not go into the E and D because I will be essentially almost maxed out. So it would be monies that we could use the prepay to offset the '21 budget.
And how much is that approximately?
Right now, last time I reported, we were around a million dollars. It's now closer to about 800. But I also know that there's going to be a number of PPE items coming in that we have to potentially buy out of the FY '20 budget to get ahead. So I already bought, you know, masks, gloves, 14,000 each thermometers, but we're just getting lists now from the nurses. So I don't expect that 800 to, me to prepay 800 to offset the '21 budget.
And is a laptop purchase replacing a lease? In other words, we don't have anything if we don't buy them right now?
Yeah, it, it's a four-year, it's part of the IT plan. It's as if, I'm sorry, for drawing a blank.
The replacement cycle?
Yeah.
Yeah, four years, right.
Yeah. So it would be essentially FY '21's payment for in FY '20.
Right, that would allow us to reduce the budget.
No, I understand the, the cycle, but do we have devices that we will be sending back to a leasing company and we won't have, we'll be short?
Oh, you know what? I don't want to give you the wrong answer to that. Let me find that out. I don't know if we're doing any trade-ins.
Yeah, I thought we'd buy them out, so we'll check.
Yeah.
Get you the right.
I was trying to.
I don't think I'm sending anything back, no.
Right, and I'm, and this, in this situation, you know, this is a situation where we might be able to get another year out of a device. This is what I do all day, so. And, you know, maybe defer that payment a year without, you know, and if that's not true, if these are on their last legs or they're, you know.
We'll bring you the inventory if you want to look at it so you can help with this bacon and form decision. One of the biggest goals I've had the last two, almost three years, but really the last two, is to get the replacement cycle back on track. Because the way it had been managed prior to me was the money would be there, but it became, it was being used as contingency almost, and we got really, really behind. So I don't know that we're at a place where we can skip it at this point because we still were catching up and trying to sync up that we had a really good plan in place that had us using reliable machines regularly. And obviously now that's even more important, so we'll bring you the inventory so you can see.
Yeah, and then.
I also think, oh, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I also think it's a different discussion to discussing buying them out of next year's budget versus prepaying them now. Next year's budget is the one with a lot of pressure on it. Not that we want to throw away money and waste it at the end of this year, but if we can prepay something now and get that kind of off the books for next year's budget, I think that's the one that's a more of a concern. So if we prepay it now and we take care of that, I feel like that, that puts us in a better position going forward. Again, to the point that this might not get better before it gets worked. You know, two or three years out might not look any better. And if we keep skipping that replacement cycle, we end up in a bad position.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where I'd come out to is, let's, let's, we've got the money now. Let's use it because we, we may very well need to have a year where we don't do replacements.
Right.
Just to get a budget passed.
Yeah, we'll bring you, we'll bring you the inventory then so you can see the age, the life of the machines and where we're at and give that to you for next week's agenda.
That'd be great. I just.
That'd be great.
It's a good, Cynthia, it's a great question.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we don't send any back. I, I drew a blank.
No, no.
Sorry.
And for our, I might be watching and think, oh, I'm watching this on a four-year-old Mac.
Yeah, no, we're, yeah.
That's not the way these machines are treated.
Right.
They're actively used and transported all over Concord, Carlisle.
We almost got through in an hour.
Yeah, we're doing great.
Yeah, pretty impressive.
Couple of quick questions. I know we're watching the time. Jared, this conversation is predicated on you already intending to transfer money to bring E and D to 5%, is that correct?
Correct. So the way that that really works is the revenue that I'm projecting above what was budgeted for FY '20 is going to get us very close to the 5%. Any monies left over between 20, only about, I think we're going to be about $20,000 to $30,000 away from being at 5%. So the revolving accounts are all healthy. We could add a little bit more to them, but there's definitely going to be monies available that we want to prepay due to all, due to the, really the freeze on the budget.
And the prepay is past practice.
Yeah.
Lori, did I hear you correctly? When you referred to the 381 laptop replacement, that this would reduce the budget? I think what you meant was reduce pressure on the budget and give us some latitude for the unanticipated's that are going to be anticipated as soon as we can.
Well, and really, the committee can go either way with that. You can choose to reduce the budget by that number, so your FY '21 number goes down. Or you can use that as offset for other things. So there's, it, it just opens up options.
So we have a responsibility to look at that.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And just so you know, as I build the budget, I'm, I mean Lori and I are going through it, but we are going to really review it. It's going to be done really after July 1st. So I have to put assumption, I have to basically have assumptions, but a plan to have that money spent and at least a quote before July 1st. I can, I can pay up until July 15th, but I need to have a quote in hand before June 30th.
I understand.
All right.
We're going to call June 30th the longest day in your year, right?
It's, and Ian's year.
One of the things that, you know, we've heard about in the last week, and we know it's there anyway, but, you know, these guideline mandates that the state's thinking about may introduce expenses to our budget. You know, sometime, God knows, it could be six weeks from now, could be two months from now that we don't know about. So I think, you know, having E and D topped off and some things paid for in advance. And given that, you know, we're not going to have town meeting until fall, it appears. We, you know, we have some latitude here to, to understand where we are expense-wise relative to our requested budgets in the warrant. And, you know, we can, we can do what we need to do or what we think we need to do and, you know, make adjustments to that budget or, or not if we.
And in times of uncertainty, information has a great calming effect. I think we need to look for even more ways to communicate what we're doing around our fiscal affairs. Even though I think we're doing a superb job now, I hope we are. I think we are. Let's be mindful to that.
Yeah, for sure. If we're done with the budget discussion, there's one thing before we adjourn. The mosquitoes asked if they could publish the letter that Court wrote.
I was going to ask that we send it to them, so there you go.
If there's no objection to that, I guess I would ask Court to, to put a signature line for Heather and I on the letter and.
I'll send that to you shortly.
Send it to us and we'll get it over to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will do.
And obviously, I'd love to push it out to the community by email, like I have the others that have come up.
Yes, please.
And if the Journal wants it.
We should send it to the Journal also.
Yes.
Okay, so any other business before we adjourn? So the Concord, Carlisle, the Concord School Committee and the Concord, Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation or litigating position of the public body and not return to open session. Just kind of a motion to.
We'll move for both.
Seconded for both.
And roll call vote. Rainey?
Aye for both.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Vote?
Aye for both.
Stoffey?
Most of here for region.
Why are you?
Johnston, aye for both.